That you guide us this afternoon, crown our head with wisdom, knowledge and understanding of the business at hand, and that whatever we do here this afternoon, Father, let us do it decent and in order, in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing for a few minutes, please, as we remember the firefighters in Houston, Texas, that lost their lives. I had a family member to contact me and extend the invitation for our firefighters, but we weren't able to schedule due to the abruptness, but I want you to always think about our frontline ambassadors, so let us pause for a moment of silence, please. Good evening, everyone, and I wish to welcome you to this meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman. Been a busy, busy time as we work to close out the year, and I have some announcements as I promised you last month. I'd like to welcome our listening audience who are out watching us from TV. We are live, Mr. Florida. We're not live?
They lost the link.
Oh, okay. Oh, then I can just, but it would be recorded on the way. Ms. Goldman, roll call to determine a quorum, please.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Nissen.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. I'm gonna go ahead and get my announcements out of the way, and we have a presentation from Mr. McKee in reference to an award that we received, and you may have already seen it in the newspaper, but I'm extremely proud of this award that we have received. But I think I'm gonna go ahead and do our special guest. We have some retirees, Bastrop Fire Department. Chief Montgomery, if you would like to join me at the podium. Okay. Bastrop Fire Department retirees, David Jester, 27 years of service to the City of Bastrop, Fire Prevention and Chief Captain. We want to thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
On behalf of the City of Bastrop, we want to thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you, ma'am.
He will receive an axe. It's my understanding this is a tradition that the union gives that axe, and I didn't know whether to bring an axe in.
In the courtroom.
In the courtroom. Would you like to say something at the end of the chief?
Yes, ma'am, I would, just for a second.
Okay, do I need to let the chief go first?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we may be here a while.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
Chief Jester was the chief of fire prevention, and he's also a captain. He's an outstanding individual that always put service first. He was a wonderful employee to have. You know, you'd be happy to see people reach this stage, but also there's a bit of sadness because the fire department is losing a good man. And with that, I give you Chief Jester. Captain Jester.
One thing I'd just like to say that I came here in 1986, and reality was I quit a job for 750 a week for a job making 850 a month. Now, that didn't make a lot of sense, but God blessed me every day I was here, and I really and truly give all the credit to Jesus Christ for keeping us safe. We've never had a person lost.
Amen.
As they experienced in Houston. And I worked with some of the best people in the world. And I said the world, and that's really what I mean. And I just want y'all to know that I appreciate it, and I appreciate having the opportunity to be able to help others and take care of my family at the same time. And that's really all I need to say about it. I think it says enough.
We have a resolution, and we have to take action on the resolution, so if you'll...
Can you turn me back up, which is four lines?
Okay. I don't wanna give you the wrong one. David?
David.
Jamie Walker, 26 years of service, captain. Captain Walker? On behalf of the City of Bastrop, I wish to thank you for your service to the city. Chief?
Again, Captain Walker has been with the department 26 years. I wish we had more men like Captain Walker. He's always gone above and beyond the call of duty. He's always mind his business. He's never been a troublemaker. He has an opinion just like everybody else, but he's always been a team player and wanted to try to better the Bastrop Fire Department. And with that, I give you Captain Walker.
I appreciate the time and the opportunity. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Your axe is coming too, Mr. Walker. Okay. Okay, these are your two new hires, Orlando. Are they here with us today? Okay, we'll tend to that later. All right, thank you, Chief Montgomery, if you'll bring those back. Bastrop Police Department. And while the chief is making his way, we do have two new hires, and they will be formally introduced to you at an appropriate time, but that's Orlando D. Mitchell and Justin Owens. We have Sandra Thomas Leonard. It was my distinct pleasure during my tenure to name Sandra as captain of the detective division. She's the first female to hold that ranking position, and she is a piece of history, and I trust that you will record that piece of history. Chief, would you like to go first? Don't fight over.
I didn't think about that. Sandra's a retiree that I'm gonna really miss. I depend on her for a lot of things. She has run the detective division very well, and she, if I needed to talk anything over and needed, you know, run something by her, and we can, you know, toss things around, make decisions, she was a very good, a good one to consult, and I'm gonna miss her. I wish I could talk her into staying a while longer, but I think she's made her for mine.
On behalf of the City of Bastrop, I wish to thank you for your service. It's a pledge of working with you. Can I have a certificate?
Thank you.
I have a plaque. And would you like to?
I'd just like to thank the citizens of Bastrop and the administrators for being very, very good to me, and they've always stood behind me whenever I made a decision. I appreciate my chief, former chief, my present chief, the council, former council. I came here in 1989 with the intentions of being a dispatcher, not many people know that, but God had other plans, so I ended up on the streets. I enjoyed every minute, and I'm kinda, I'm gonna miss the people of Bastrop, but I'll be around.
And also, the chief has three new hires, Jamie Stires, Danny Coronado, and Michael Angelo Watkins. Michael is here. Like to just stand up for a moment, please? We want to welcome, Michael is from the City of Bastrop, and we were able to recruit him back home. Okay, we have Mr. McKee, Johnny Musgrove, and Barry. Johnny worked on the both of you. Johnny is not here, but we have a resolution, and if either one of you gentlemen would like to say something. Would you present this to Johnny?
Yes, ma'am, I can. Mr. Musgrove, like, came about 10 years ago, whatever, and like, as far as anything that to be did up or whatever, he provided a lot of leadership with other mechanics, a decent mechanic, and that he's gonna be greatly missed, so. Like Mr. Thomas said, like, he'll be around, you know, he constantly come around and check and see how everybody doing, but make sure everything going good, but we're gonna miss him.
Thank you for accepting that on behalf of Johnny. Also, I'm gonna save one here for last, but we always celebrate the accomplishments of our employees and their children, and Chief Montgomery, come on back up. Chief Montgomery has stewed with me three times since I've been mayor. His son graduated from Gremlin and received his bachelor's, then his son received his master's, and now his daughter is receiving, or has received, her nursing degree.
Yes.
So that's three times, and we like to celebrate the accomplishments of the families, and if you would, Tyra Gladys Rose Montgomery, on behalf of the City of Bastrop, we wish to congratulate you for graduating from the Gremlin State University School of Nursing. Best wishes to you on your future endeavors from the office of the mayor. May God bless you. Would you like to say something? Oh, you want your daddy to speak for you? Chief Montgomery wants to.
Yes, indeed. This is a proud moment, a proud popper. We've been blessed that all three of our kids have been able to complete college, but Tyra's unique. She was a self-motivator. She's never given us a minute's problem, always made good decisions, and the other two, we had to push, pull, and drag them across the line. But Tyra knew, you know, from the word go, she's just always done well, and we've been extremely proud of her, and she's been extremely independent, and glad she has a nursing degree 'cause she can take care of pops now, you know.
Well, it was a long, hard road, but I made it, and I just want to thank everybody
for the support and for your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you for bearing with us as we do these celebrations. I think it's very important because you can praise people on to success. Now, this next certificate, I don't, I'm at a loss of words because I have actually been to three retirements for him, if not the four. Mr. Willie Charles McKee is my husband's best hunting buddy. They hunted together for over 30 years, and Jerry, what year was it we went? I know we went to something that was held at the municipal center, so this is the best we could do with all the budget cuts, Mr. McKee, but I would be so pleased to have you join me at the podium. This is a gentleman who has literally given of himself 35 years of service to the City of Bastrop, and we have a plaque of celebration for you for those 35 years, but because Willie has been so special, as all employees are to me special, but Willie's kinda like the one with nine lives, and he keeps bouncing back, and I wanted to give Willie a special plaque from the office of the mayor of the City of Bastrop. I want to give you a lifetime City of Bastrop Ambassador Award. This award is hereby given to Willie Charles McKee for 35 years of dedicated service to the City of Bastrop under the leaderships of belated former Mayor John Bond, former Mayor Clarence Hawken, and yours truly Betty Alfred Olive. I don't know if you already want me to read this in. Started out as a fireman, February 28, 1977. Then he moved on to fire driver, then fire prevention officer, then fire chief, 2000, chief of staff, February 2005, city clerk, January 2006, public works director, May 2008, and special projects director, January 2013. That's quite an accomplishment, and Willie, I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna go to my seat, and if you'd like to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
You okay, Willie?
This won't take long. First, I want to thank all the administrations that I've served under. I want to thank the citizens of Bastrop, and I want to thank God for allowing me to have the help to do this job. As the mayor read off the different positions I've held, something came to my mind, that was the city trying to find a job that I could actually do? But the city has been good to me and my family. I put four girls through college working for the City of Bastrop. I don't think I'm gonna be quite lucky. Chief Montgomery, who has a daughter, is gonna take care of them. My oldest girl is 43, and I'm still helping her, so thank y'all again.
Moving right along, we received an LCDBG grant. We applied for it in November of 2011. We received notification this week that we will be receiving $454,850, and our match is $96,000, giving a total of over half a million dollars in street repairs that we will be making to the City of Bastrop, seven streets. Also, and Mr. McKee is gonna give you a presentation, but I'm gonna speed through this, Mr. McKee. Brother Kenneth Pack is having community service. It is scheduled for June 28, 7 o'clock, at Pastor DeJette's Church. That's Friendship Community Ministry located at 1602 West Madison. I submitted a letter of support to the Morehouse Parish School System for the 21st Century Grant. Staff, you may recall, we worked on that and itemized some things that we would work in coordination with this grant, and the school system has been awarded $2 million over a three-year period, so that's good news for the school system, and I'm so pleased to have been a part of submitting, along with other community agencies, a letter of support in that respect. Okay, we have a grant. Chief, you want to talk about where the recent grant we submitted? I have this in my announcement folder, Sandra. We submitted this grant application. We have a deadline we're trying to meet, chief. I sent you the email on the... What is the deadline date on that, Sandra? It's a cops?
It's a cop hiring grant. We met the deadline and submitted.
Okay.
The deadline got extended a little bit, and we submitted it on time, and so we're just, we probably, they won't make the awards probably till the fall.
Okay. So we did meet that deadline, and thank you, chief. We continue to look for grant opportunities as they become available, and as you well know, grants are very competitive, and sometimes they take a very long time to come through. Juneteenth Celebration, Dotson Park, this is an annual celebration, 10 a.m. There will be food, merchandise, vendors, the Bastrop Police and Fire Departments will be on hand to demonstrate the equipment, so remember, this is a historic day that is very important in our community. Also, Ralph George. Any update on Ralph George? Usually, they have a celebration out there, so you might want to stop by Ralph George Park. The Wind Rock I-20 Corridor Regional Accelerator Workshop is scheduled for July 2, Louisiana Tech University. This is a grant that we were a part of that President Obama awarded, and we supported that grant, and it was a grant of over $900,000, so they are having a workshop to that effect. Ms. Goldman, I'm gonna give this to you, so since that's a pending date that we can put out in the public. I believe that concludes all of my announcements. Are there any announcements, council members?
Yes, ma'am. I spoke with Mr. Iris Smith, and Ralph George will be having a Juneteenth Celebration.
Okay. Ralph George Park, Mr. Johnson has confirmed that there will be a celebration at Ralph George Park. Mr. McKee, if you would, he's going to give us a presentation on that street rehab grant.
I have comments for both Mr. Lawrence and Ms. Goldman, and I believe the council members and the mayor already have one. I'll stand back over here so I won't be in the light. This grant is based on census tracts and income levels, and it's a community development grant issued by the state, and as the mayor said, we've been working on it for approximately two years.
We can't hear you.
Let me see if I can stand over here. As the mayor's indicated, we've worked on this grant for approximately two years, drawn a survey, and submitted, and it got approved. The area highlighted in black on the whole city map there is the area that it's located in, and once again, I want to emphasize the fact that it's, grant is based on the census tracts and income for the area. Census tracts, yes, sir. It's set forth by the federal government during its blast census.
Excuse me, Mr. McKee, would you like to come closer and sit on the front?
I can't, I didn't get here in time to get on the agenda, but I have some questions that I have been asked about, and I'd like to ask you and the council about this.
At the appropriate time.
Would you give me time, just a minute?
At the appropriate time, we have a place for public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Would you continue? I wanted to extend you the courtesy, if you'd like to come closer, so that it would be more audible for you. Excuse me.
I know where he is.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McKee?
Okay, I'll go to the next slide, and this is a highlight of the target area. It's in the northwest section of Bastrop, off of Marable Street, and last, we went ahead and broke down the CDBG grant, and Blanch Street will be resurfaced from Marable to Katy, George Street will be resurfaced from Marable to Katy, Harrington will be resurfaced from Marable to Pruitt, Katy will be resurfaced from Harrison to Blanch, Pruitt will be resurfaced from Haynes Avenue to Forest, Robert will be resurfaced from Haynes Avenue to Forest, and last, Clara will be resurfaced from Van Avenue to Forest Street, a property of 1.95 miles.
Council members, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. McKee. Item number four, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Public comments as they relate to items on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
If you would, state your name and your point of reference that you wish to speak
My name is Boots Farrell. I'm a retired banker. Worked here in Bastrop for, since 1951. I retired about 15 years ago. In Thursday's paper, no, it's Tuesday paper, June 11, it came out, the city receives the grant, and it named the streets. I bet you I've had 15 people to ask me why and how these streets were selected, so when some that was much more traveled, you can hardly get up and down. Why were these selected, and what was the criteria for selecting them to spend this much money? Can somebody give me an answer that I can go back and tell the people?
Oh, absolutely. We'd be more than happy to answer you. Are you finished?
Yes, ma'am. That's all I need to ask. What criteria and how, why these were selected, rather than East Cypress and some others that in such deplorable condition?
Yes, sir. Mr. McKee, if you'll come back and give us some history on the street. There's a rubric and a scoring tab. There's a criteria that has to be met, and they look at the greatest needs area, and sometimes the selection process, rather than be eliminated out of the water altogether, you follow what is, what is available to you in terms of the selection criteria. Would you have a seat, Mr. Farrell?
Okay.
Mr. McKee is going to come back and speak to the history of the street rehab project, and as he indicated in his PowerPoint presentation, they look at income level. We have to look at streets that have already been cambered for sewer, and, Mr. McKee, if you don't mind, I think for clarity to show the streets, or talk about the streets that have already been rehabbed initially.
I guess first, ma'am, with your permission, I heard Mr. Farrell mention East Cypress.
Yes, sir.
East Cypress, I mean, you...
East Cypress has been resurfaced.
Okay, you got some railroad tracks.
Okay, excuse me. We have one person that's...
I think I can address that, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm talking to him.
Yes, sir, but we...
East Cypress has been resurfaced, except for the railroad tracks, and let me explain the railroad tracks. The railroad tracks come across East Cypress Street, and they come across Madison and Jefferson, but that right-of-way, as the council well knows, does not belong to us, so we can't resurface over the railroad. Now, what they did say they would do, the railroad is in operation, they would put us in their rehab budget to, that they will actually come in when they get the money available and fix that street. The other one, the other railroad company that's out of business, we weren't able to get an okay for them, and to give you a little bit of background about the right-of-way, we just finished DG Foods. We had to get a permit from, and I think council members remember, and Mr. Sacco remember, to go, to bowl up under that railroad track that's not even being utilized because it is still that right-of-way. So that's the reason that that section of East Cypress is in deal, but the rest of East Cypress has been done, to the best of my knowledge. With regard to the census tract that we, that we're talking about right now, ma'am, we don't actually pick the census tract. The community development broad grant actually sets forth a criteria for, that they will approve, based on income levels and neighborhoods, and, once again, the census tract. So what we submit is, we submit an application for a grant based on what their criteria, what the state's criteria is. I don't know if that answered Mr. Farrell's question, but it's the information that I have.
Okay. In the interest of protecting one speaker at a time, now that you have addressed that, Mr. McKee? Mr. McKee, and thank you so much. Mr. Farrell, do you have another question?
Well, still in reference to this same thing.
If you'll come back to the microphone, or can we get them, if it will be.
I can answer while I'm up here, you can hear me.
Look, we wish to accommodate you, we'll give you the microphone, and we are being recorded.
There are some big taxpayers that has paid some big, paid some big bucks in Bastrop. The next time Clarence Hawkins comes to town, you ask him, what does the expression white flight mean? That's what's happened to Bastrop, and that's where your tax base is coming from. So please remember these things. I know it's all federal money, it's our tax money, me and you paid for it, it's gimme, 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 but there's got to be a limit somewhere. So what I tell these folks that's paying the big taxes in Bastrop, I moved out a number of years ago, I saw my house was fixing to get to a point I couldn't give it away, so I moved. I would be just like this area if they were you fixing to put these streets right there.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments as it relates to items on the agenda?
I got it.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion on approval of previous minutes in our regular meeting in May 9, 2013.
I make that, Mayor, motion. Mayor?
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Second.
Second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Finance Committee Report Resolution 13-1504, Bills Claims for the Month of May 2013. Mr. Locke?
Mayor, I move for the approval of the Finance Committee Report Resolution 13-1505, Bills and Claims for the Month of May 2013.
Properly moved by Mr. Locke?
Second.
Second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, we have already done the formal commending, but we wish to make it official, commending Jamie Walker upon his retirement. At this time, I will entertain a motion on Resolution 13-1501.
So moved.
Properly moved by Mr. Mason?
Second.
Second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, Resolution 13-1502, Commending David Jester Upon His Retirement As Captain. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make that motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Aye, second.
And second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, Resolution 13-1503, Commending Johnny Musgrove Upon His Retirement As City Garage Foreman With The City Of Bastrop Public Works Department. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson?
Okay.
And second by Mr. Mason. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 13-1505, Commending Sandra Thomas Upon Her Retirement As Captain Of The Detective Division With Bastrop Police Department.
So moved.
Properly moved by Mr. Locke?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moore. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 13-1506, A Resolution Making Application For The Louisiana State Bond Commission For Approval Of The Incuring Of Debt And Issuance By The City Of Bastrop State Of Louisiana, Of Not To Exceed $1,500,000 Revenue Anticipation Note Series 2013 And Providing For Other Matters In Connection Therewith. As you know, this is a procedural that is done annually. Mr. Nasaka is here with us from Baton Rouge, if you would come to the microphone and speak to Resolution 13-1506.
Mayor, good evening, good evening, Alderman. With, this resolution is, as the mayor mentioned, something that we, that the city has done annually for the last 10, 11 years, and it allows us to properly use our cash and cash flow, our city's budget and expenses through the end of the year, end of the calendar year until our property taxes come in. So it's the same amount, same details, mirror image of what we did last year, and this allows us to, your approval of this tonight allows us to move forward expediently and take advantage of interest rates. As you recall, last year, we had very favorable interest rates, and we still have that climate now, and it allows us to move forward expediently with that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nasaka. On having heard that presentation, at this time, I will entertain a motion on Resolution 13-1506.
Mayor, I make that motion.
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 13-1508, we have this item on the agenda, a resolution of the mayor and aldermen of the City Of Bastrop, Louisiana to approve an extension of the contractual engagement of Trinity Capital Resource LLC as per the terms of the written contract amendment of May 2013 presented as a second addendum to an existing agreement of October 14, 2010, for the purpose of providing project consulting services in support of the development and implementation of the industrial park for the City Of Bastrop, State Of Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. It is my appreciation that there has been a request to table this item. Mr. Lawrence, I'll talk about it a little bit, this item is on the agenda, but it is my understanding that the council wants to table this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay. Do you recommend that we take a vote on tabling or just to wait and they can address it at a later date?
Yeah, unless a motion comes on the floor, it's not necessary to wait.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to item number 13. Resolution 13-1507, A Resolution Of The Mayor And Board Of Aldermen Of The City Of Bastrop, Louisiana To Authorize The Mayor On Behalf Of City Of Bastrop To Enter Into A Contract With Lewis And Ellis Incorporated To Provide Actuary Service For Gasbeak Compliance. Ms. Goldman, if you'll speak to us about that.
Mayor and council, this is something that we've had to actually do, I think this is our third year to do it. This is an audit issue for several years, when it come in compliance, we were out of compliance. This is just, just an accountant and actuary that goes and looks, and it has to do with our health insurance for our active as well as our retirees, and it's just somebody looking over and they project future years and what we might have to put back, and this has to be done so that way Ms. Cindy Haynes can do our audit every year. The price they quoted is going to be between 800 and 1,000. I think last year it was 1,000. So this is just an annual thing, we send it off, the information, and they give us the numbers at audit time.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Goldman. As she has indicated, this is a standard procedure, and as you know, most cities do not have the full staff to be able to do everything, therefore, this is a necessary item, and I ask the pleasure of your support.
I make a motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore?
Second.
Second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, Resolution 13-1509, A Resolution Of The Mayor And Board Of Aldermen Of The City Of Bastrop, Louisiana To Authorize The Mayor To Enter Into An Agreement With Vantage Health Plan Incorporated For Providing Health Insurance To All City Employees And Retirees For Fiscal Year 2013-14. This is an act that is necessary to avoid a lapse in service. Ms. Goldman, if you would, provide some dialogue.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, last meeting, Ms. Renita Jenkins, which is our insurance consultant, came to you, she took bids, she received three, and Vantage is a company that actually we've been with since 2007. They come in with the lowest rate, I think one of them was 16%, and one company said, oh, I can't even touch it. So she looked at it, said we, because I think our increase was 7%, she reported to y'all that once you can keep it into single digits, you're really getting a good bid, and she spoke and really offered to make her recommendation that we stay with Vantage. Because we didn't have a resolution ready, we decided that we would actually do the resolution this month. This year will be for our current fiscal year, for two plans, it will run consecutively with our fiscal year in 2014.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman, I appreciate that presentation, and we do want to make sure we do not have a lapse in service, so I will entertain a motion on Resolution 13-1507.
So moved.
Properly moved by Mr. Mason?
Second.
And I hear two seconds.
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore? Okay, and second by Mr. Moore. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 15, 13, I'm sorry, -1509, A Resolution Of The Mayor And Board Of Aldermen Of The City Of Bastrop, Louisiana. Okay, I just read that, didn't I? 15, Discussion/Action On Choosing The Official Journal For The City Of Bastrop. We have to have an official journal for publication purposes and legal notification? Ms. Goldman, if you would, speak to that item.
This is an annual event, and it states that we have to select an official journal at the first meeting in June. So we have a deadline, once y'all take action, we will send off the proper forms in the morning and make that official, that we have named Bastrop Daily Enterprise our official journal.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman, and we do have Ms. D. Tubbs, Representative Of Bastrop Daily Enterprise with us. At this time, I will entertain a motion on this resolution for our official journal.
I make that move, ma'am, a motion.
Properly moved by Ms. Armstrong?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any question, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16, Discussion/Action Bids For Surplus Property Located At 620 Paradise Drive. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, a couple of months ago, we had a gentleman that was interested in purchasing some land that was actually adjudicated to the city. He actually owns the land adjacent to it, it did have a structure, it still has a structure, but it is very caved in, it really needs to be torn down. Was an eyesore, and he really wanted to own it so he can clean it up. The council approved it, voted to declare it surplus, which means no value, the city has no, no, no need for it. So we put it out for bids, and we reset actually two bids, I think I gave y'all a copy of that in your packet. He actually bided twice on it, and when he come, you know, I asked why, and he turned in, that's the first bid I got, was the 1,00850, and he said that he thought that was a little too low, so he actually sent another one. So I'm going to recommend that we take the 2,050 bid because it's the highest bid, and y'all give us already permission to hire Judge Brandon to, I mean Judge Lester, to handle the acquisition, and then that property will go back on the tax roll and we'll be able to collect taxes on it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Goldman. He was the only bidder, he submitted two bids.
He did.
So he actually would have gotten it for the lower.
He would have, but he didn't know that at the time, so he didn't want to take a chance, so he submitted another one.
How about that? Council members, at this time, I will entertain a motion on accepting this bid.
I make the motion, ma'am.
Properly moved by Mr. Armstrong?
Second.
Second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Liquor license, Chief Black.
Yes, I recommend that the following establishment receive their liquor license for 2013, of course, pending their receiving the state license first. Port House Liquor, 1851 North Washington Street, it's a Class A retail dealer off premises license. I think they have a new owner.
Okay. How many do we have? We have?
Just one.
Just one? At this time, whose district and who would like to have the honor? Which, which address is it? I left my packet in the office.
It's my district.
It is your district? Would you like to have the honor?
Yes, I make a motion.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore?
Second.
Second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any question, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We're taking care of everything, Ms. Goldman, moving down to item number 18. I have a message that I would like to share with you, one of my personal inspirations. Initially, I had planned to conduct and close this June 13, 2013, meeting with business as usual, but I decided that to do so would be an understatement to the staff and all of our hard work. Being the person who I am, I feel compelled to culminate this meeting with my personal signature. My philosophy as a public servant is to serve a cause greater than self, to seek to give so that life can be better for others rather than what can be gained to make life better for self. To the staff, thank you for the countless hours of hard work preparing agendas reflective of Bastrop's first female mayor. To the citizens, thank you for helping me to help the less fortunate families during the holiday season, all of which served as a reflection of the city's spirit. To all employees who have shouldered your weight of the burden of holding the City Of Bastrop together through the financial crisis that we have survived, thank you. Knowing that we cannot budget and sustain an estimated half million dollars that it would have taken to give you at least a 2% raise, we work to improve our physical environment, refurbish city hall on the exterior and interior, and incorporate modern technology throughout this facility, all in an effort to reflect pride. May the completion of the long-awaited Four Gateway Signage Project stand as symbols of progress throughout this city, that from 2009 to 2013, we carry the banner of Bastrop's tagline, "A Spirit Pride And Progress To Higher Heights." To the Board Of Aldermen, it is with honor that I have served with you, holding an uncompromising oath of my office to always look out for the best interests of Bastrop, even when it was not popular or understood, and I commend you for doing the same. We navigated our way through the Post International Paper Company era when naysayers predicted that the City Of Bastrop would roll up its sleeves. To everyone, one of my favorite writers, Ralph Waldo Emerson, said that success is to leave a place a bit better than you found it. Most public officials develop a personal motto, and mine is, "The privilege of serving is an honor, the fulfillment of my duty is an obligation, a legacy of accomplishment is my peace of mind. May God bless each of you, this city, state, and country." Ms. Goldman, I would like to tender a copy of this to be recorded with the Bastrop minutes. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I make that motion.
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moore. Any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.